Jessica, you can hear us?
Yes, I can do it.
One of our members is on the screen, those in the audience can't see her. For hybrid meeting, so we can participate online or in person. Free COVID, you know, COVID thing that both call me if you do it, make it more acceptable. Okay, when we call your case, we have to each presenter come up to the lectern. We don't elect them, so they'll call a table of lectern today. Identify themselves and appropriate question, state your request to the board and identify your hardship and the reason for the request. Remember, your hardship cannot be financial in nature because it runs with the land and is clearly to your property. Board will then ask questions of you, after which you will sit down, we will give those present a chance to speak. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions or some of your requests. We record the meetings, everyone must speak into the microphone. Microphone here is on ceiling, so these are dated, I guess. And state their name, the board will then go into business section, discussion. There are five morning members on the board and takes more positive vote to create a variance. John Mahoney, our chair, he has moved out of Kaneum, so we don't have a chair, we do not have a chair now. We need to name a temporary chair. And then at the next meeting, we'll vote for a temporary chair. Then have motion for a temporary chair.
Motion.
Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
That's obvious, temporary chair. We have four members here, one alternate. Appreciate the alternates being here. There used to be a lot of continuity on the board for many years. Often, the good thing is an alternate, you'll get to participate in a lot of meetings. Maybe you won't be an alternate forever, but you'll have some experience. The only difference than alternate is when we go into the business section, you often can't speak. But inside and business section, we encourage you to participate. Things that you can, and when you're seated, you can't speak in the same. Christie, the first matter today is the continuation of Eleven Parish Lane. Christie, you were at the last hearing on, or the prior two hearings on this, this is the third time it's come before us. We appreciate that first, so we're going to seat you again to hear this.
I said we roll call.
Okay.
So, Natasha.
Present.
Jessica Carden.
Present.
Here's all present, Rich Carrot, Chris Bonner, Preston, and Brittany Singer, present.
Don, Ashford, Sean Early. You want to present your case, continuation from last month, we have new plans in front of us.
I do. So, good evening, yeah, Sean Early, I met some of you before. I reside at Eleven Parish Lane, you guys should have the exhibit in front of you. The site plan SP 101 is pretty much all we need for this exercise here away. We'd like to build a two-part garage attached for a living old pair. We currently are allowed additional 552 feet, we're asking for 808. It would be for a 25-foot by 25-foot garage. We looked into attaching it to the side, which was suggested last week. It's north, it can't be done, and the hardship we're claiming is that the existing power, propane, and all the other utilities are in that corner of the lot, forcing us to 45 and create the garage as shown in the site plan. Our current garage, although it's not a hardship, it's just a plane, does not fit a car. Unless it was like a golf cart. And again, we're asking for 800 feet and we'd like it to be attached, so there's a little causeway is what we need to attach it. Are there any questions?
How many square feet did this proposal start?
This proposal started, your question, with an ask of 4,500 point five feet. And that was for a three-part garage.
How many over was, I think was
Go over by about 1,400 feet.
I think it was 800, and then last month they got it down to about 530 and then
Oh, 800, 530 now.
345.
And last month, we asked, you come back with the hard, with the hardship here being normally utilities coming in from the front of the property here, it's this kind of corner lot, you have underground utilities coming in from Parish and Lane, so I had to guess in about cutting down the over coverage by tapping it directly to the garage couldn't be done because all utilities servicing the property are underground there.
Correct.
It was appropriate, so we asked for a higher check. The business. Anyone have any? I'm just Jessica. No. I mean, anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I think we did, we did through this a couple of times and the has come down quite a bit and made the modifications, I think we have, you know, the hardship. But you've indicated, so I don't have any more questions.
I say I agree with Rich, I think that you've done what we've asked in terms of reducing the size and having visited the lot. I do remember seeing all of the utilities, you know, in that section of where they come into. So I have no questions at this point.
So, no one has any question, any comments in the audience?
I read that.
Anyone on Zoom have any comments?
I would just like to compliment this Jessica Carden, the redesign, the thoughtful consideration to the comments and feedbacks over the last two meetings. You know, I think it is more in the realm of de minimis for the request, you know, against the challenges we've faced with the hardship.
Thank you around the board, appreciate you coming back three times, I've been on board, that's the longest time I've ever met someone being a state of pursuit, so.
You're black on the wall.
I didn't want that. So, okay, we're going to move into the business section then, so really you can talk in this section. Anybody have any questions? I think the most, and then that we allow the variance of the plans on account of the hardship, hardship being it's a corner lot and utility serving it, coming from from Parish Road underground, it's the only way to riverize, to keep a corner like that, with the trees there. And so we need to issue the
I second that. Motion, Rich Carrot.
Chris. Yeah.
Yes. Dylan Taylor.
Rich Carrot in favor.
Jessica.
Carden in favor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. You can become a member of the
Not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, Ron.
Okay. Yeah. Next item on the agenda is 1112, Myer Road.
No.
No, this is working.
I was getting the last one. Next one is 2141 Lane. David Root, you represent the against Sarah Alden, Secretary of Department. Tony Veris, my application of David, and Ruchi Lynn, you and Ruchi LLC, authentic agents for the Pentshaw Trust. Owners for variance of section 3.52 to allow to be worked and really not coming green up over the 45-foot front setbacks to have a space. The lot covered porch to be 35.8 feet and 36 feet from the front yard and set back to 45 feet in the two acres of the institute. So, with lane match, but it's very lot 41 lot four.
Thank you. Good evening, David Root, you're representing Pentshaw Trust. We think it's also Leandra and Richard Gere, they're also the partners of the trust, and we live in on the property. We also have architect Steven Barlow, who I think is online. You may know this property, so this is in Brookwood Lane, it's a large piece of property, it's about 32 acres and stuff. And it essentially goes from Brookwood Lane, it borders Norhold, it borders the Field Club on the south end and of course Smith's Ridge on the east end. You enter the property, as you can see here, sort of along this curve, and you see how Brookwood Lane comes in here on the beginning part of the property, and then if you just watch my cursor, it comes all the way around. And this is sort of where you start to see the house on the property, and the house sits very close to this, this line. Vis a vis how big this particular property is. And the reason behind that is actually this particular property became, used to be in the A-zone. And in the 60s, it was upstone to the two-acre zone. So, when it was in the A-zone, it was conforming as to the setbacks to the front yard, but no longer is based on the fact that as soon as they did the upstone in the 60s, it became non-conforming. It went from 30-foot setback to a 45-foot setback. The property, it's almost 1,800 square feet or so of front yard that they have, that they're sort of encumbered with here. And what we're looking to do today is, well, good for some of the properties today, but what we're looking to today is actually convert a a greenhouse upon the property now that's legally non-conforming, that became non-conforming once they did the upzone. And then add, you can figure that particular spot to basically make it more of a mudroom to get into the house. And also a couple offices, a bathroom, and covered porch. That'll be converted, and there's two little pieces that we're going to be adding to it. All told, we're only adding about 127 square feet into that setback area. We're still going to be behind where the greenhouse was, but it's still within the 45-foot setback in this time. So here's the front of the house. It's a, I'm going to let the architect talk a lot about the architect in the house, but, you know, one of the things, since I've been representing these particular clients, that's been clear to me is how much they want to keep this house just the way it is. And they're doing, you know, certainly they're doing some renovations in the interior, sort of modernizing, bring it up to today's standard. But as far as the property, they're doing very little anywhere else on the property so that they can keep this sort of beautiful 33-acre piece of property, which is, you know, not only benefits them, but obviously benefits everybody else in that neighborhood as well. This is sort of where we're starting, where the garage sits right now, you can see to the right-hand side here where this greenhouse is. And as we move ourselves along, you kind of come along the side here, there's lots of screening already in place on this particular piece of property. And here's another view, kind of coming along the side, looking south. And you'll see that little area where the greenhouse is, it's sort of a courtyard, and there's a large stone wall that separates other parts of the property. This is looking from the property line back into the house. This is looking sort of from the house, the greenhouse across the street. You can sort of see one of the neighbors here, here's a, here's their, if you look at the cursor, you can just see the fireplace, the chimney here. That chimney, they sit about six to 10 feet below this property to begin with, and I'll show you some pictures of that. Here's just the area that's going to get filled in. This is the area that we're hoping that the variance will be granted for. And then this is the other side, so here, if you look at my cursor, is where we're doing the work in that area. But one of the rational reasons why we can't really do it back in this particular area is this property is, you know, has incredible gardens on it, incredible statues, fountains, etc., and just don't want to take any of those out to put in, you know, essentially 127 square feet. Here's your proposed survey. You'll see as you come in Brookwood Lane here, here's where the, the step line is, setback line is. And where the new addition is, a portion of this is actually the greenhouse already. This is not, this is just another addition, but that's nothing to do with this, with what we're requesting. Here's a better look at it. So, if you look at the cursor here, what I'm, what I'm circling right now, that's the existing greenhouse. Right here, that's, that's what's actually already existing on the property. And these are the two parts are going to sort of get added to it here and here. But once again, they're over this 45-foot setback line. This is a topo, we can go through this, tons of cover tons of property is available. We have essentially 45,000 square feet we could technically cover on this property, we're covering 800. Here's a better look, here's your existing greenhouse in the red and the stone patio, and this is that stone wall I was talking about before, when you look from the fountain to the stone wall. This is what it's going to look like, you know, in the event we're successful enough to get a variance, how much is there? And then these are the two pieces, once again, that are getting added, this is the 127 square feet that are going over the setback, the 45-foot setback. I think what I'll do right now is I'll just quickly throw out our hardships for the board, I mentioned do that when we first started, but then I'm going to ask the architect to go through the plan, and one of the hardships really is this building and the way that it sits on, not only on the property, but its architectural significance for the property, so topography of the lot is very difficult, and I'll show you that when we get to sort of some of the other pictures and the neighbors and where we're, where we could potentially build. The distance to the two-point yard and the 1100 square, 100 square feet of frontage. And then obviously upstone to the A to basically putting all this into non-conforming, at least supporting the house into non-conforming. And then the architectural layout and style of the home, this is a Harold Reeve Sleeper home, and I'm going to ask Steve Barlow to sort of run through his plans and how he came up with putting this space together for the commission.
David, before you go. So, what, what do you say, it's 1100 feet of front?
Correct.
And it's part along the road.
Along the road, you have.
In the total approach, when you're asking for variance for, 127 square feet?
Correct. Part, portion of that is 79 square feet is actually heated space, the other part is a porch. Which is about 49 square feet. And it really, in order to utilize the, the existing, so when you come into the property where those garage doors, or to sort of use that as you're entering into the house where you have the mudroom and, you know, offices, and you come into the kitchen, that's right next to the garage. So, that's the way we want to try to come in, and we want to utilize that particular space where the, we visiting greenhouses, and that's where we're filling in in that particular spot.
Now, fortunately, I don't know if anyone was able to visit the site, but when I went there, there's no one though.
Nobody to open the, I mean.
Yes. I mean.
I drove around.
Always do a site visit before.
Well, let me just go through what we have here and see whether or not that's going to be fixed.
Yes.
Enough that you guys understand.
You know, a little audit procedure, you know, giving it to the site.
It's not a requirement, it's great that everyone does that, but it is not a requirement.
Let me show you, if I can hopefully explain it enough between the maps and the presentation I have, hopefully that will give you some context as to what you're looking at. Let me ask Steve Barlow to talk about the architecture first.
Okay.
Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me? My name is Stephen Barlow, I'm the architect for this project. First thing I'd like to say is I think it's worth noting that the home, the existing home was designed by noted architect named Harold Reeve Sleeper, who's the co-founder of, and wrote the book Architectural Graphic Standards, which is referenced by several generations of American architects. And it's also worth noting that the home was owned by one of the country's greatest composers and recording artists for a long period of time. So I think that preserving the integrity of this house, first and foremost, be, because of these two points in and of itself, is worthwhile. The house is an example of a relaxed colonial revival style of the early part of the 20th century. It's cited so that the interior spaces have direct relationship to specific landscape views and daylight. The house has a human scale and possess, which is not normally possessed by many homes of this stature today. At this point in time, we, we'd like to preserve as much of the original house as possible, and that's the kind of the approach that we've taken with the owners on this project. We have an interest in preserving the grace and the scale of the home and creating a minimal disturbance to its form in the site. And there's a few practical reasons. Currently, there's no obvious space to receive visitors or various types other than from through the front door, which we feel is problematic. Has no real family entrance on to this house and and adding such an addition to the front, we feel would disrupt the original character and nature of the house. So, the proposal is to design a mudroom entrance and home office off the garage space to take advantage of the old greenhouse. And to allow us to control who comes into the site and to allow the owners to have a family entrance while preserving the, the main facade and main entrance to the, to the site from the motor court. Can I, could I have your cursor? David?
I don't think so.
Can't give it to me? Okay, you can't give it to me. Okay, so from the, from the entrance hall, the portico, we saw your photographs from the front. We want to preserve the main facade and we want to enter in next to that garage area. So we've created a porch, which is outdoor space, just to cover, to keep, keep someone from out of the rain. We, we were trying to preserve the facade of the garage and the brickwork that's there, and then bring someone around into, into this, into the house through the side. So, we're creating like this minimal porch there, that was the 49 square feet of exterior space. Once you come into the house, and you can see that in the lower left-hand corner there. Yeah, in the lower left, number four, you can see the entrance porch and the addition that we're proposing from the, the garage and motor parking area. Now, we've worked very hard to keep the scale of this particular addition down low and in keeping with a few other areas of the house, which are of wood construction and not bricks. We're also maintaining egress, there's a bedroom in the garage, you can see where the cursor is now, number five. We're working to keep egress from that window beyond in the, in the garage there, so that they have maintain, maintain egress through that and out of those spaces. And so, scale of the, and height of the proposed addition, no taller than what exists there now. So, adding, adding second entrance and office to this house is necessary to force degrees of security and utility. And give the owners family entrance in the back of the house. We chose this area of the house, ideally to keep away from the front of the house, but also the existing greenhouse in the, in the areas and this portion of the house are the most deteriorated and the least useful to the house themselves. So we've worked very hard to create an addition that is minimal, that works with kind of the existing spaces as much as possible, but will add value, character to the house and preserve the front of the house and the architecture that exists. So, that's basically what we're, what the proposal is for the addition here. So we're asking for internal space, 79 square feet of additional heated space on this project.
Yeah, we didn't question. And then, what's anyone else on the board, have any questions, Jessica, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I just wanted to run around essentially the house itself, and to why we found it difficult to put this addition anywhere else. I mean, the main thing is really to be able to use the mudroom right off the garage area. And that seems to be the most important place to add it, but as you can see, from here, we would have to pick out, you know, multiple fountains and statues, which is just not going with sort of the architecture of the house. We had to put it, you know, some sort of mudroom back into this particular area. As you go around the side of the house, this is the north side of the house, and you can see it sort of drops down, so there's a big drop down here, topography. To try and add it, here's sort of the front door over here. And then if you were trying to add something to this particular, you have a huge drop-off, and once again, you have these beautiful walls and brick that you're trying to preserve on this particular house. Don't want it to look sort of tortured into what we're trying to do here. That's just a drop-off now. And if you look out the back of the property, this is towards the pond, there's also a large drop-off in the rear of the property as well. That's looking back up into it. Once again, it's not really conducive of trying to put any sort of addition down here, nor would you want to do that anyway, just based on where the garage entry area is. This is the south side of the property, once again, you see there's steps, topography changes, once again, not a place where you're going to be putting anything. Here's another look at it from the lower level of that. This is just a big open field that's on the other side of where the, that the fountain was. And this, if you go, if you went all the way to get back here, this is where the field club is, just for your variance, this is actually, you know, where they are. Neighboring Properties, so here's a sort of look at the Brookwood, Brookwood Lane, right? So here, you're coming in from here, you're taking this turn around, and then here's where we're trying to put the new business. Even though you have sort of a 35-foot setback to the line, the paved way is almost 50 feet away for the travel lane in Brookwood. So it's not as if you're right on the road or right on a setback. And not only that, but the house across the street sits down another 6 feet, and here's for Brookwood Lane, we'll be up, this is where the house is. Okay, this is the house across the street, essentially 115 feet away from where we're doing it, from where we're proposing. This is what they look at today from where they are. So you can see sort of the top chimney of, of the Pentshaw House, but you're not going to see anything in this area because the, the construction is only a store, store and a half, so you won't be able to see anything from this house anyway. And here's another look going down the line, once again, south, if you were on Brookwood Lane. This is the, across the street, I took this picture from the edge of the travel way over here, and this is the property that I showed, the closest neighbor per se, and you can see they have some, they have some nice screening as well on that particular piece of property. Other properties are further away, obviously 400 feet is the next one. 200 feet down the lane further, and then, you know, we're almost up to another 400 feet down the lane. So we think it's very well screened already, we're not proposing any screening, although we probably will have screening at some point, you just haven't come up with that particular plan yet. But notwithstanding that, today, the people across the street are not going to see any of But notwithstanding that, today, the people across the street are not going to see any of this construction that's happening on the property.
So just to confirm, I know you said it, but it's an important point. So this screening that we saw from the folks looking at the house from across the street are going to see that same wooded screen. That's not going to be touched. And I think you said that, but I just wanted.
Yeah, I mean, we are going to add to it. We're going to add to that screening if anything, we're going to probably.
Definitely add to it.
Yeah, we're going to replace the fence to it. There's obviously some some privacy concerns already on that sort of where this property is, is based on the fact of how close the house is already to the line. So they are thinking about doing a lot more screening as we go walk down that that line as we go.
I think to add here, am I allowed to talk? Sorry, Richard Gere. I think when the previous owner, in fact, when he built the greenhouse, they asked that the screening be put up across the street. And so that's mature now and thick, but we would be adding to that. And as you can see, the this new construction is actually lower than what they can see now.
David, so is it like a chain link fence and then the screening behind it or it's kind of hard to tell the picture?
A little bit of both.
It's, yeah, it's kind of around the fence. It's on the roadside, but also here.
I think you included your application prior variance for eight foot fence, where's that fence? That's downward field classes. So the the Steinman's put ask for a variance for, because they're getting like tennis ball into their property. So he asked for an eight foot fence all the way down on that south corner. But it's not really near there. If you look back at that one picture, that's going to be that on the other, all the way down.
It's all the way at the end.
Right down here, so it's not really part of that. And you can see even here, you know, you have a lot of screening that's going in. And once again, the applicant is going to put in a lot more screening. We don't have a full screening plan to date, but it's definitely going to be done. We're just trying to figure out now how we're changing things. I don't know if there's any questions about that in the properties. I did not receive, we obviously sent out notices. I did not get any phone calls from any of the neighbors. We've done the wetlands application before and I had a few calls on that. But I did not get any phone calls from any of the neighbors on this particular application. As far as that goes.
And Rick, just a history, which, you know, think about the hardship. So when the house was originally constructed in nineteen thirty eight, it was under a different zoning and the setback at that time was only thirty feet, the requirement. So based on topography of the of the land and the wetlands, they probably positioned the property, the house, you know, at the appropriate site of the property. But then when it switched zones, it became forty five feet and but it was legally non.
Exactly. So, yeah, it's the upzoning that that hurt this particular property. A zone used to be like the furthest zone out years ago. And then when they did the two and the four, they they essentially put this property into nonconformity. And I think to your point, that's a good one, is that the house was cited based on the topography to begin with. You can see how we have those steep drops down. And I guess you could have been put in that field more sometimes, but for whatever reason, they didn't choose to do that. The topography is, I mean, this whole house sort of sits in a place where you experience nature. Like, that's what you're looking out into. Like, it was put there for a purpose, not necessarily, you know, for anything other than that's the way they wanted it set it on the property. And at the time, it was conformable by like five or six feet, wasn't even wasn't even on the line.
Right, right.
But, you know, then when they upgrown, obviously, you go to forty five feet. And I think, you know, like many of the other applications you sometimes see here, when you're on a corner lot, I mean, that's this is basically a huge corner lot. And that in and of itself can be considered a hardship because you have to deal with a front yard that takes up, you know, two, two parts of your property. And this one, it takes up a large, even larger piece than that on the property. So I think that it's certainly well within, you know, a request app for this based on the fact that we do have this large, this long front yard and the topography of the property. And of course, the upzone of the property. And this one's significant, the upzone of the property, just based on where the house was already sitting. Jessica?
I I think the request, you know, look, they have some challenges with the property and also with how the house was originally situated. I think the very minimalist amount of the changes that are proposed that would go into the area required for the set off variance is is pretty minimal. It seems like for the size of the acreage of the lot, they're really, they're kind of tied to the fact that the house is placed where it is on the slot. So I think they came in with a pretty de minimis type of request, especially considering some of the other topography and other challenges.
I'd like to say I agree with Jessica, but I mean, having driven around, and I know the foliage isn't, you know, to its full extent at this point, I really couldn't see any intrusion from someone, a neighbor or whatever, looking in from that perspective. So the screening right now seems to be appropriate. And if you're going to do additional, I can't see where that would not be a positive from that perspective.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to keep our privacy. So we're going to be adding to everything that's on that.
I don't have anything else, Sharon, unless you have any other question. Is there anyone in the audience for this? Is there anyone on Zoom or against us? I would, there's nothing else I'll see Brittany for this. So when we move into the executive section, you can ask any question, but no one else can. And then we'll have a vote. David, sorry, I should say we can't talk while you.
They're giving me. I'm not allowed to talk anymore. It's been very hard for me, man.
No, I could say that, I mean, I think it's a significant piece of property. We have a real sort of the property here who wants to keep this property the way it is, wants to get the house the way it is, wants to keep the land the way it is. And I just think that if the diminished request based on the fact that you have this large front yard, there's really not much else you can you can put there as far as trying to add a mudroom or anything like that. And I think the architect made a good point about, you know, you don't want to have just one entry into this house. You certainly want to have something else. And that's a pretty useless thing with, you know, all the houses in your candy, not Chris, the, you know, in a state like this. Close, you know. Oh, you're a real member.
Okay, so you're, yeah. We're still getting organized.
We've had a lot. It's a small town. Before this.
We love this town.
Before the last three months, it was like we had the same, we had the same chair for one year. Early in the city, it was on forever. And then been a lot of movement in the town. So our chair, our old chair, I mean, another chair, another chair on the fourth of mine. I mean, they're running out of people. So we had to reach some towns here. So you're turning in third, yeah, always does, so.
The only thing I'd like to add to this is just that we love this place. That, yeah, you can stop here, my wife is the one that. We love the place. And we're excited about about our kids growing up in this house specifically. And we've, we've, we're very fortunate, we feel, that we borrowed this place. And the intention obviously is to honor it as it was and as it was designed and how it evolved. And as we hear the story of how that property evolved and how it's magically still there, not subdivided. And our intention obviously to keep it as long as possible. And respect it for it.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
He's a pro. Okay, so we're going to move into business section now. Brittany seated as a member. Jessica, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I think I said enough of what I thought on the new matter before. You know, I really, I think there's been a good argument laid for some of the challenges of the property, the the natural hardships. I think where the house is situated on such a vast, you know, acreage, it basically created some of these challenges for them along with the topography. So I really think it was a pretty reasonable request coming through, particularly with no challenges or opposition from the neighbors.
Anywhere, any comment? Jessica, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I move that the variance be granted for this property in light of the challenges with where the house is placed on the sizable area of this acreage property. And also the topography that has been noted as being a challenge for trying to locate the proposed changes house in another area. And that would be it.
I'll second that motion. One, it will, Brittany?
Rich Tower two in favor.
Carden in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. I always say, I said to my wife, this is America. This is it.
Small meeting, we need to have acquisition happen in August. It was true, small town America.
Well, we're very excited to.
We have a great school district, by the way.
Yes.
And a great football program.
Yes, we have four boys, so. Oh, really? He's a senior.
And within the last, within the last five years, we have two NFL players that came from our program. I used to say Allen, who plays for the Arizona Cardinals, and now he's with the Broncos. He just signed the forty five million dollar contract.
I bet.
We're all proud of him.
Is he going to give back?
Yeah. It's the next proposal someone.
Come from my family. My father was the vice president of Real Madrid. So soccer is being in my dad and my family. So we're hoping to get really good, you know, in terms of soccer with our kids here.
Good, which is a great program.
Really excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, it's maybe the temperature spins on Zoom right here. One person still in the audience, eleven farm row.
We just have to announce, there was one other application I remember.
Thirty six south would drive, don't don't inherit, application was to drive.
And then just read the.
We know it was in control.
Eleven farm runs owning variance, my application found a kid and orders for a variance in sections five point one half to allow construction on five accessory structures, the Dunne Stadium, within the fifty percent. Want to build a cover on a lot to go from two hundred and one thousand fifty square feet to two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty five square feet, where fifty one thousand five hundred and fifty one square feet permitted in the wavey zone at eleven front road map thirty one block. Do one lot ninety.
Good.
You want to introduce yourself?
I will. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rush, for your time. I'm Tiger Man, Director of Public Works for the town. So I want to introduce the project a little bit. It's a it's a Dunning Stadium Enterprise Zone project. It's a four year project at present, so ten million dollars. It's in a public private partnership with the Athletic Foundation. Athletic Foundation is putting up the minimum of two million dollars specifically towards phase one and then hopefully another million dollars on phase four. Phase one includes concession stand, to be a press box rebuild, and then basically the site work to allow us to expand for home bathrooms, new home bathrooms, new visitor bathrooms and much needed storage for our players. The visitor bathroom could basically down in the visitor section, but they'd be utilized every single day by by our players since they have to now either go to a portal or go run back to the gym. Would imagine a football player trying to go to a portal or try to run back to the gym every day. And then a rebuild of the existing concession stand itself, just a renovation. And then a new concession stand will be the last phase. And that concession stand and the home bathrooms actually be facing the stadium as well as have an opening to the outside so that the waving turf fields that we've been rebuilding will actually become an entire enterprise zone. So for tournaments or other play, or if we're just playing Monday through Monday through Sunday, parents could come across and we're envisioning something like a meat park. All right, so Meat Park Lodge will have a concession stand open from both sides. Bathrooms open from both sides, right now they're not. So the while we have one phase for this summer strictly slated to start right after graduation, there are four other phases or three other phases that finally completed. So we'll go through each thing. The the second phase, actually, that I didn't speak of is traffic circulation in and around the high school as far as we're looking to put in a a traffic circle and then redo the parking areas and then work on pedestrian access from the gym to the stadium to the turf fields to the track and to the tennis courts all in one. So right now, if you look at it, it's kind of haphazard. And it's a little bit, I won't call it dangerous, but it's not the best layout for students trying to cross or then players crossing or in the drop off and pickup times specifically after school, which really, really very difficult. That's one of the reasons why I came forward. So that's actually phase two. Phase three would be the home and away bathrooms and phase four would be the concession stand. So that kind of lays out the entire program as we see this one, the the first phase, and it deals with the press box and the site work. Like I said, it's slated for this year, it's four million dollars. Every other phase after that is two million apiece, so four, two, 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 total ten. Mike Seagan from Richter and Seagan is our lead landscape architect. He's leading the project. We have, we have Richter and Seagan, we have TLB Architecture, we have Accord Engineering, and we have SLR Traffic Engineers all on board. So Mike is here with the architects to kind of lead you through a request for a for a variance for for the Stadium Enterprise Zone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tiger. Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening, as Tiger mentioned, I'm Mike Seagan, landscape architect with Richter and Seagan. We are the project landscape architects and planners. And in addition to Tiger, Tiger mentioned that Mike Fortuna and Nick Mondo are here tonight as well to answer any questions. As Tiger mentioned, we're here for variances and on side yard setbacks and coverage for improved Dunning Stadium improvements. These improvements Tiger mentioned are a part of a longer term plan. The plan proposes five new renovator, new structures within the stadium, all of which trigger the need for the variance request. We're we're in a pretty unique situation here. And I I think some quick background information on the Waviney property acquisition by the town in the high school campus development will illustrate why we are seeking these variances. Jeff, next slide. This map shows the entire Waviney zone in the high school campus where Dunning Stadium improvements are proposed. The project location that's a subject to this application is parcel E in the Dunning Stadium, the project area within that yellow marked area within partially. Partially was originally part of Waviney property donated to the town in the nineteen sixties. The at this time, the entire property, which is approximately three hundred and forty acres, was divided into separate parcels, each of with its own restrictions, mostly governed around the use of each separate parcel. And this guided the development of each one of these parcels. Can you go to the enlargement, Jeff? Can you go to the enlargement, Jeff? The parcels in question are parcels E, F, and D seen in the enlargement here. Parcel E is where the high school and the stadium reside and is the focus of the proposed improvements and the variances that are being requested. Uh, you can see the um. Jeff, if you can kind of just outline, yeah, parcel E. Parcel D is to the east of parcel E. Uh, owned by the town in the Cape, about twenty acres, uh, heavily wooded and wetlands. Parcel F uh, to the west of the site. Uh, is about a- a- almost twenty acres, eighteen some acres. And includes uh, circulation for the high school, some parking, uh, the fields, the tracking field and and. The tennis courts and other items, so it's really part of the, the high school campus. While divided i- into these separate parcels, the, the original ten, I believe, was for the town-owned lands to function as a campus. While the high school building and Dunne Stadium are located in parcel E. Portions of the high school campus included the parking, circulation, athletic fields, recreation components. Uh, extend into parcel F, as I mentioned, and also even into parcel C, which is the left on the sheet. The deed restrictions and parcels established at the time the land was donated make it unlikely that the separate parcels wherever be combined. This has resulted in property boundaries that necessarily do not fit the uses of the lots and do not fit the way the high school and Wavenly Park campus have developed. Next, Jeff, please. This aerial perspective illustrates the project location. And the existing conditions for the project area and the surrounding context, the larger red star locates the main project area on the home side of the field. Where four to five buildings will be located. The fifth building will be located on the visitor's side of the field adjacent to the town overwood and wetland area. You can see the smaller uh, the uh. Star there. You can also see the surrounding context for this project is really the high school campus and there are no impacted uh, adjacent neighbors. The high school building is directly to the north of the stadium. To the west of the stadium are parking lots and circulation drives and parcel F with the track and field tennis course and athletic fields. To the east and the south of the field, just off the image, are heavily wooded areas with large amounts of weapons. As you can see from the aerial perspective, it is impossible to recognize that parcel E and F are separate lots. As the two parcels seamlessly blend into one another. This aerial perspective also illustrates the project's location at the backside of the school property. Um, and and there, there really are no negatively impacted neighbors, neighbors that are e- even, uh, this is visible from. Uh, the closest neighborhood projects are really the high school campus itself, the school building. Uh, in the parcel F and parcel D and parcel C, which are basically all woods, uh, both to the east and the south.
Mike, can you go back to the? Parcel map, I think with the last slide, I'm reading the slide. So the bottle of a box of, the project is going to be on parcel E and parcel F?
Uh, the project is actually uh, on partially, yes, there is some. There's a very spur that the left, if you look at the yellow. Uh, there's some additional parking that's, that's going to be added along that connector road, which actually we worked with the town to design and was installed a while back. But in turn.
Give the variance, just to be clear.
Yes.
So all those just in around parcel E?
Yeah, it's, it's o- o- only the structures uh, that are needed as variance are possibly correct. Uh, and I'll even clarify that a little more as we get into a more detailed drawing where you can actually see uh, the layout a little more clearly.
So the only legal butters from this are the butters. Is the town on partial C, D? F and the village of Wavenly?
We own that as well, they have a long-term lease for.
So all the butters are the town?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Does it send letters to itself?
Huh?
Yes, as a matter of fact, so I got a letter for this, even though I sent it to myself.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you're welcome, uh, uh, move on Jeff to the uh, site plan. Uh, this is the uh, red dirt site plan, uh, which illustrates at a larger scale the proposed improvements. Most of the improvements on the home side of the field, the existing plaza will be renovated in a large to eliminate the congestion that occurs there now. And really to accommodate uh, access to and queuing into the new buildings. Um, the existing building, the uh, that houses the bathrooms and concessions now. Uh, which is way undersized, will be renovated. We're keeping the restrooms there just simply because there's such a shortage of restaurants on the site. New restrooms will be added to the home side, addressing current standards and requirements in the significant need that exists at the stadium right now. A new concessions building will be added adjacent to these new restrooms. And I think uh, as uh, Tiger alluded to in, in his introduction. Um, an added bonus to the plan is that when the stadium is not used, the restrooms and concessions. Uh, which face uh, out to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west. Can open uh, on this uh, west side and accommodate activities on the fields and courts outside the stadium. Making the two buildings an asset really for the entire campus, so they're going to service the entire campus. Uh, when the stadium is not in use, um, and be open to, to the outside.
With a dash line running across the screen, that's the property line.
That, that's correct, that's the line between parcel E and parcel F.
And where is the setback from that?
The setbacks are lightly shown there, if you want to trace a setback line.
Where are they?
That's where I am.
See, see, there's, see the, it's fifty feet, oh.
Yeah, I can't see that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So both the two new buildings are going to be in it, and that, those small building you're building through there?
Yeah, I, I'll clarify exactly what the, what the uh, variances are there in the setbacks. Um, then a new ticket booth will be added at the stadium entrance, uh, that's the third building. A new press box uh, will replace the existing undersized and outdated press box. It also includes teaching educational space for students as well. Um, and uh, the fifth building uh, is on the visitor's side, is the proposed restrooms. And field storage building down on that side, adding some very necessary restrooms in that part of the, the stadium as well. And while not part of the variance application, uh, ju- just for your uh, information. An important part of this project is traffic and pedestrian circulation improvements, which straddle both uh, parcel E uh, in that. Uh, adding the traffic circle and other uh, circulation and parking improvements to eliminate traffic bottlenecks. Uh, there's also raised crosswalks for safer student circulation from the school. To the add athletic fields and the track and field and courts uh, beyond that. So that, that, that's all part of this project as well, just so you can see kind of the bigger picture. Uh, next, Jeff. This plan and chart illustrates the specific variances we are requesting. Uh, first, I wanted to address the setback variances. All five new buildings require variances for the Wavenly, Waver, Waverly Zone fifty-foot side yard. Uh, first is the uh, new coaching and media box. Uh, request there is for uh, from fifty foot to reduce it to a forty-one foot setback. The new restrooms are reduced that to a thirteen foot setback. Uh, the new concession to twenty-three feet. Uh, the new ticket booth, thirty-five feet. And then across the way on the visitor's side, uh, reduce that fifty foot setback to thirty-four feet for the new uh, restrooms and facility. The hardship related to step, the setback variances is based on the lot lines and deed restrictions that I just described. And the resulting extremely restricted limited space available to locate the needed uh, accessory structures for the stadium. The location of the existing stadium and relationships of the property lies would limit. The needed improvements to an area that would not accommodate the proposed structures and respect the existing parcel E setbacks. Reducing and filling the plaza space with buildings would lead to an unacceptable congestion during games impacting pedestrian circulation. Emergency access and egress, there just simply is no reasonable location for the proposed buildings that support the stadium. That would meet the setback requirements given the shoe mood situation. The second variance is requested relates to coverage. The proposal will increase coverage approximately seven thousand square feet. The allowable building coverage in the Wavenly Zone is five percent of lot size of fifty-one thousand uh, five hundred and fifty-one square feet for parcel E. The existing coverage is two hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet for the school and stadium, or nineteen point five six percent. The proposed coverage is two thousand, two, two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square feet, twenty point two five percent. But that's at increases seven thousand. For the planner's report, no previous variances were requested to allow the coverage to reach the current levels. And based on input from the town attorney, it was recommended the best course of action is to seek this variance to legitimize the existing coverage. Which was never apparently formally approved, while requesting the additional seven thousand square foot of coverage. There are multiple hardships related to uh, to this uh, coverage variance request. First relates to the lot lines and deed restrictions established for parcel E that I had mentioned, coupled with the Wavenly Zone five percent restriction. For parcel E, uh, as it was created, it would be virtually impossible to meet a five percent coverage restriction for a high school on this size parcel. If you consider the Wavenly site as a whole, the school and stadium are well within the allowable building coverage. Second, five percent building coverage in a zone that permits institutional uses such as public schools. Is, is contradictory and makes it virtually impossible to construct a functional school, especially a high school at five percent coverage. And three, finally, as, as your planner points out. If this lot was located in a residential zone, as are all the public schools in town, other than this one. The coverage issue would not be before Z P A, as the P N Z Commission has the authority to al- alter, allow the coverages for municipal facilities. And residential zones. We did look at alternatives, uh, we always ask that when we're looking for a variance. First is, is literally not doing the project, however, doing nothing. Uh, would not address a significant need to upgrade the facilities to provide the required restrooms and meet the educational and recreational needs of the school and community. A second alternative would be to relocate Dunne Stadium. Um, this just is not a feasible alternative and would be no uh, reasonable location for it uh, anywhere else uh, on, on the property. A third alternative is to locate all the buildings inside the setback line uh, in the plaza space. This would uh, eliminate plaza space needed for safe access and disrupt circulation functionality of the pro- proposed structure. This is just not a possible uh, possibility, it's restricted space. The fourth would be to locate the new buildings away from Dunne Stadium and onto the other parcels meeting setback requirements. This would result in improvements that no longer serve the stadium needs and just not a, a reasonable alternative. In conclusion, the town is seeking relief from the setback in coverage requirements to modernize and upgrade. The, the Dunne Stadium facility and to address significant deficiencies. There are no reasonable alternatives to the requested variances. The ri- variances, if requested, will in no way adversely affect the character enjoyment. Of nearby properties, granting relief for the side yard setback and coverage. Will preserve the character of the Wavenly Zone, protect and enhance existing uses within parcel E and adjacent parcels. And resolve zoning compliance issues that should have been addressed long ago. Uh, that concludes my presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mike, I have a question, so. You discussed how if they're going to build these to serve Dunne Stadium. They have them built in this area because of the plaza, you're not putting them on the other parcel by the other field, they can't serve the stadium. I mean, that, that seems. Relatively clear, just going to have this picture in front of us, there's nowhere else to put them. I think the question, again, because we're limited to granting the necessary relief is, that you just said, why are. These five buildings needed, like, I think you addressed why they have to be here if they need, but you didn't address, you know, what's the purpose of them and why each of these is needed.
Yeah, um, I, I, I start with the uh, coaching boxes really replacing the existing press boxes outdated. And it's uh, being upgraded to current standards, obviously, uh, Dunne Stadium and the caliber of competition and, and. And the stadium itself is, um, yeah, nee- needs an up, updated. Uh, coaching box, it's also expanded to um, house educational benefits uh, for the students as well. There's a student section in this box, so it's an important part of the, this, the high school educational program as well. The restrooms are mandated by code, that Dunne Stadium, if it was built today, could never have uh, been built with the amount of restrooms that they originally did. If you've been to a game there, uh, it's impossible to get into the restrooms at halftime. Um, it, it, it's solely uh, under, under uh, toilet facility uh, uh. In terms of its capacity, so the new restrooms uh, uh, respond to that need. And, and fulfill the code requirements as well, and just the basic need that's out there, both on the home side and the uh, the visitor's side as well. The concessions building uh, i- is, is new and it's being located where it is. Uh, so it can be expanded uh, to really upgrade itself to what it should be for a stadium of this caliber. The five thousand people uh, will come to games. Uh, it's, it's also being done in a way for, to benefit the entire campus um, and the community at large, it'll be open from the outside. Uh, at certain specific times to serve the community as well. So each one of these in the ticket booth, we, we need a new entrance into, into the, to uh, respond to these new building shapes. And the ticket booth uh, provides the entrance uh, away from where the old entrance is, if you're familiar with the stadium, the old entrance came between. The restrooms and concession building and it's just a completely uh, congested area, both coming in, leaving at halftime. So this corrects all those deficiencies uh, that currently in the stadium right now.
So the location, I'm sorry, the audio quality is very poor there. The, the new um, ticket booth that's to help with congestion?
Yeah, well, yes, for the traffic study also for floor of uh, people in and out, you know, visitors um, and our players and parents, what have you. And also what we have now is we, we can't have, we don't have access to the upward deck with larger equipment. So in order for us to get in and do any work inside the stadium, say on the lights or anything where we need a larger piece of equipment, we actually have to take down fencing in order to do it. So when we put the new stadium lights up, we actually have to take down rows of fencing to then bring machinery in to do the stadium lights and then. Put it back up again, right, kind of a wasted cost, if you would, the uh, what this allows us to do, you can't, it's not a necessary issue, but there's. Put it back up again, right? Kind of a wasted cost, if you would. The uh what this allows us to do, you can't, it's not necessarily efficient, but there's. In the in the the area between the old concession stand and the ticket booth is actually the entrance way. And that entrance way actually can slide completely out of the way. It's on a gate can slide open so we can bring in machinery. And then close it again so we can actually come in and service and maintain a facility with with machinery that we can't at present. Right now, the largest thing we can bring in pretty much is a golf cart. Now, or even a large pickup truck as well.
Yeah, a bridge carrier. Um just having a son, you know, come through the football program. I've always worried about, you know, you have the entrance to the right corner where the players come in and out. With the ambulance.
Right.
And then most of the folks come out through the alleyway, which is pretty congested. So in an emergency. If everyone had to leave that stadium for your equipment.
Would be quite difficult.
That would be, it would be quite difficult. I see that as being a logic.
And then from the from the bathroom perspective, right now, there's only three mounds, three-to-three mile toilets. So everything is being serviced by portlets. Um and yeah, the other factor is that, you know, while I don't like to say we're keeping up with the Joneses, we have. Our neighbors are substantially, you know, increasing their facilities. Norwalk has been said that it looks like a division-three college campus at present. So while we feel that we have the preeminent stadium in Fairfield County, if not the state. We haven't really done anything to the stadium since its inception, since it was built um twenty-five years ago. Apart from re-skinning the turf, we haven't really done anything, any upgrades to the state of itself. It sits as it did at the time. So the feeling is that um the the improvements are needed from that standpoint. That's one of the reasons why there's been an influx of two million dollars from. The populace, you know, from the residents themselves to this specific. It was a, the the project itself was originally envisioned as a as a press box. As an expansion of the press box, but then when we looked at a master plan for the stadium and the enterprise zone. All these other aspects came into play that we were basically woefully inadequate, specifically on the bathroom side. And then on just storage for our for equipment. Um right now, everything sits out on the stadium grounds and we're having to replace the equipment much at a much a quicker rate. At a lot harder price because we can't store it inside, right? So all the netting tends to fail after a year. If we can't bring it inside, things of that nature, then so we're spending money because we just don't have a place adequate place to store anything. Uh so.
And the concession stand is required because.
It will, it's an upgrade from what was existing from twenty-five years ago. It's a little bit small as far as how it services. And then the the overall thought is to try to make waving itself a destination in a way it's being utilized now. Given the fact we we have three dirt fields to have, if you want to say, you know, um. The uh it's we're trying to make sure that, you know, as parents are coming there, it's destination. Similar to me Park Lodge. Me Park Lodge is a destination for a baseball facility, quote-unquote baseball facility, since we have. You know, younger players playing there in the large fields. Um this is the exact same situation. So we we consider it a quality of life situation as well to be able to then relocate the concession stand in a in a better location. And then be able to sort of have a plaza on the outside, plaza on the inside, service both sides. Whether the stadium is being operated or not, one of the one of the, you know, the thought was that we were, we needed to put a bathroom facility. On this end of the the park itself, where you have one in the center, right, by the softball field, we're putting one at the potty shed. Um or next to the potty shed as an annex to the to the powerhouse theater. So there's an outdoor bathroom or accessible bathrooms there. We don't have anything here on the on the northern side of the campus itself. So the thought was exactly that. And and uh given the fact that the if we're gonna open up the bathrooms for it, it's the 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 concession stand would be a likely addition. And that was uh that was driven by by uh by the users as well. That was driven by residents, not necessarily by the town. The majority of these uh requests, the only request that actually came in from the town was the the storage facility that came in from the V O E. Um for their use and for the visitor bathroom specifically for the athletes. The rest of it was generated by uh by residential requests.
Which one, which one has the story?
This is the visitor's bathroom on the bottom, right? Right there, there, it's a it's like a two bay, small two bay garage. I don't call it a garage because it only houses a gator, you know, or a golf cart. Um and then bathroom facilities itself. And then everything here has actually been reduced in size. So we we started off a little bit larger. And we value engineered down about three million dollars out of the project already. So the press box is gonna be a two-story and a little bit larger of a footprint. Now it's a one-story, a little bit smaller. But to Mike's point as well, with the press box, right now, our students bring all their their A V equipment. From the from the school over on game day and then bring it back. There's actually a video um online about how they how they accomplish that. This will allow them to actually have space inside where that's why it's part of the teaching aspect. So they'll actually have there, they don't have to move it, relocate every single game to bring it back and forth. It'll actually be on the stadium side. And then it could be utilized for not just football, but for lacrosse practice, soccer practice, field hockey, things of that nature.
Just very terrible to me. Um like the five percent, like reset that rule. I mean, again, this whole. Like, I'm for all of this. I mean, this, I mean, I'm a little biased, but I'm for it all. But it's kind of odd that it comes to this committee, no? I mean, isn't it sort of a town? Like P and Z kind of like this is great for the community. They have the town council should vote on this.
One tiger came to me with this proposal. We kind of went through everything and, you know, there was an elephant in the room of there are hundred and fifty thousand square feet over coverage. And there's no variance on the lot, or there's also no provision in the regulations that says that P and Z can alter that. And so we spoke with the town attorney, we presented the situation to him and he was like, well, that's odd. And he was like, honestly, they should go for a variance. And, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. They got approvals in two thousand three, two thousand five, two thousand seven, I think, all from P and Z. I went through the minutes, I went through the app. No discussion on coverage. I even, I contacted the person who was the town planner in two thousand five. He couldn't, he couldn't remember for his also like, that's odd. I don't think he would miss it, but there's no documentation of it anywhere.
And now, is it, uh uh yeah, I don't want to speculate here, but this property was all donated by the family.
The purchase donation, yeah, right, by the last ones.
The right. Now, uh is it because the town thinks, I mean, like, what did they want to happen to this property? You know, we doing something so that they didn't want to be done?
I think what happened with the five percent was, and I mean, so the waving zone was created in the eighties. I believe, and I I think the initial thinking was they put it at five percent because at the end of the day, well, yes, schools are allowed and, you know, um waving care centers as well. I think, you know, the two hundred acre main parcel, they still want to protect that. They want that to be a park. And so. You know, maybe there should be an exception in the regulations for coverage for the high school, but I think it's at five percent because. They're still trying to protect the whole.
Right, I think they are right. When she donated the parcels, they each came with their own restrictions. That's why it's all parcellized. So the high school sits on what was to be used for educational purposes.
Right.
The waving care sits on what was for uh medical purposes for basically they want to elder care. That she that she was, she was directing the development or how the town could develop it.
Okay.
Then there are certain ones that are for horticultural and recreation. Um and then there's a parcel across the the um uh Mary Parkway. That is unrestricted because she was upset that the Parkway came through and bifurcated the property. They own the property and then the Parkway came through. So she considered that not necessarily part of it. So it's the only one we can, we have no restrictions on it. We can sell if we want to. Not that we're looking at it, but. That's the only one, but it's on the opposite side next to Town and Shore train station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So each one has a has an aspect. The one in the middle is recreational based. They're all recreation. And it's like recreation, horticultural, recreation and education, these kind of things, but it all kind of based upon recreation. So we could put the the track and the tennis courts and the fields on the recreation side. Because it was recreation, even though it was education, it was recreation, right? Where the high school had to be where it was. And the original consideration was that the stadium was a portion or a part of the high school. It's not that anymore. It's it's, you know, while it's used by this by the B O E, you know, Monday through Friday up until a certain time. After hours, it's used by by everyone. And then on the weekends, it's used by everyone, um by all of our groups. Um so it doesn't, it's not, you know, while it's. Um it's, it was considered as part of the high school campus and probably that's why it resides in this corner. It's it it it's morphed into something much more, which I think she probably would have approved of. Um the uh and and the thought being is also that um. It's it's all town property in in itself. So even the B O E sits on it, right? Um when when the stadium was created, it was created as its own enterprise zone. It wasn't funded by the B O E. It was funded completely by private donations. It's actually a story about where they were two, I think, two hundred thousand dollars short or a hundred thousand dollars short in the in the meeting. First lineman stood up for his checkbook and asked for one person to stand up and they both split the bill at the end, either wrote fifty thousand dollar checks. Or a hundred thousand dollar checks to push it over the finish line. Um but the thought is that um it sat as an enterprise zone up until a couple of years ago. And then at that point in time, in the N C A F, the Athletic Foundation was created. The Athletic Foundation took over the mandate of looking at the entire area as to how we want to see our sports programs grow. And then try to be a conduit for um for donations.
Right.
But the town itself took over the maintenance of Dunning Stadium. So now it sits in my budget, right, the Parks Department as far as the maintenance of the stadium itself. So it's no longer considered a, you know, a B O E uh responsibility. It never was and they they never had money in their budget to take care of it. It was always part of rentals. Rentals would cover all the maintenance costs of the of the facility. Now the rentals go towards the Athletic Foundation's funds to then either maintain the properties or or build new. And the town takes care of the uh the day to day.
I just don't want to get caught up in, are we given, again, I'm not an attorney, are are we given a variance? The the variant, you know, is it in line with our wishes?
This application, if you approve it, then has to go to the planning and zoning commission. They can't even go before P and Z un- unless you guys approve it because it's suggesting things that violate the regulations.
So, okay, I run the doc, run the doc thing in a month.
I think the only question that's relevant to deed restrictions of the parcel, um north, I guess, is that app?
Parcel.
E, whichever one's above above this.
Parcel that was for recreational purposes.
So that one you could have built. So if on the other side of the line, you could build it to just want it to be practical with state.
Right, but this, yeah, the way in the current layout, if we were to do that and then try to stay outside that setback, we'd be either in the middle of the parking lot. Or we would be onto the turf field spot, if you can kind of judge where you would be, just to try this. And then. In order to go to a football game and then get a hot dog, you gotta go across the parking lot to go get a hot dog to come back and go to the stadium. I don't even know how we would do that, you know? How that would, how that would.
Coming from all those fields from the north like the tennis.
They they can come in, but there there's fencing around it. But if you were coming to a stadium that was ticketed, right, you come in with your ticket. You have to have the concession stand in it. You can't necessarily leave to come back. Um so, yeah, so, yeah, if we were to build it outside that zone or get outside. We we can't come, we can't come necessarily to the east to try to get out of the out of the setback line. Because the the patio, we would, the buildings would be on top of each other, there'd be no patio left. And if we went on the opposite side of it and we went towards the west, we'd have to go the fifty feet plus. And we'd be into the parking lot or into the turf field or the tennis courts. There's no real, there's no real option to then to uh going to the west side. Sorry, the uh to me, they're almost perfectly placed as to where, in, you know, topographically as well, and granted, you know, we we haven't even spoken about that. But topographically, they're sitting almost at the edge as well as the way you go, because you know that there's a slope that comes off the backside of the stadium as well. So we're we're um, you know, we're we're working within those confines as well for accessibility to come from the parking lots or from the other. Facilities into the stadium. So we've 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 tried to make it, I think Mike's done, like, his crew's done a nice job of. Fitting where 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 it can be located, where it's best located. Sorry, yeah.
No, it's okay. Um you you mentioned that the original restaurants are three, three and three. And how much has the school grown or the use of the facilities grown since the.
Yeah, back in like twenty-five years ago when the stadium was installed, yeah. And I think in back then, by code, I don't think it would, I don't know. I'm still trying to figure out how they got three and three at the time, because it was considered, you know, it's an area of assembly. Um so we're trying to expand on that number. Um and we're trying to strike a balance of that and the bathroom count. Based upon what are we trying to serve? So your average soccer game has two hundred and fifty, three hundred people in, right? Your average football game, not turkey ball, has fourteen hundred and then turkey ball is four thousand, right? So there's trying to fit for four thousand. That's when we were in the thirteen, fourteen million dollar range to try to get as many bathrooms as we could, but. It's only for one day, right? So the thought is, well, if we need to portalize at that time, we can. Now we're trying to fit in somewhere between the fourteen hundred and the three, that range in there, that sweet spot between the average football game. And the average soccer game or average lacrosse game. And speaking to uh the chief building official from the state. Anything we do is an improvement and anything will be welcome. He's not giving us a requirement. So what we need to do is just say. Once you add one, we're doing a lot better than we are at present. So he's not saying you have to have to hit four thousand, you don't have to hit fourteen hundred. But, you know, bring yourself above that. So we we we've struck a nice balance on size of facility and the number of facilities within, size of building and the number of facilities within.
All right, let's go through these balancing acts when we make our motion. If someone makes a motion, we have to, you know, discuss the need for locations. You're pretty clear. The bathroom, I issued, we discussed the need, the ticket booth and the pedestrian access for vehicle access. The bathrooms in the south and the storage space, the concession stand, I believe you're all sort of addressed the need, but serve. The fields across that are new or in these fields, you know, I mean, here's the full side, it's. I mean, I guess the only other structure there is the press box. And the need for that is so that it's um can be used as classroom space as well.
That's correct. It's but you're right. We'll have dedicated spaces for the students. This will have uh home and away um. Coach's box, post boxes, and then uh broadcast. Since we've come a long way since when the stadium was first built. As far as broadcasting, what was being asked of the populace, you know, as far as they want to see the game, if they're, if they even can't, they can't be here, right? So the broadcast capacity has changed dramatically from where we were twenty-five years ago. So not only do we broadcast out on a professional basis, but the students broadcast as well. So you've got home and away coaches broadcasts. Um and then, you know, standardized broadcasts and then the students themselves. So and most of our stu-, I wish I had the video for you, but looking at the videos, it was astounding because most of our students actually. Go to college for this and then are actually, this is their career path, right? So they they've chosen to hear the teacher. Man's who's been doing this for a long time, set a fantastic job as far as fostering that with the kids to then, you know, get the love here. And then we'll go to college and then beyond. And a lot of them have made a nice career for themselves. Um so it's it's sits with our feeling also is that it's just not for the athletes, right? It's it's actually for the student population, if it's serving a non-athlete as well, or a student, this student, that's not the, it's not an athlete per cent. Or not playing that specific sport.
When you, when you sent the letters to yourself, did anyone object?
No, the objective, I I didn't yell myself. I I didn't get any.
Well, like wave anything, I Ross, whoever runs that, the work there, does it, no one objected?
No, so we didn't get it, we didn't get that. Um the Park and Rec Commission is in favor, because we spoke to Park and Rec Commission. Waving Conservancy was in favor, um since we talked to them about everything that's going on anyway. So they're they're aware of here. Conservancy is really only truly focused on south of the uh of the main drive. Um didn't hear from um the uh waving care center. They had spoken when we had put the track in.
Yeah.
Give you an idea back then. So they did have concerns at that time about some lighting. Even though a lot of the residents love to watch the activity on the track because it's something active every single day. So they'll sit in their windows and watch. Uh but no, we didn't receive anything. And normally, I'll be honest with you, normally whenever I do something in waving. I get a call from somebody. So usually when we send out a wetland application or something, I get a call from a resident. We 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 didn't receive anything on this at all.
Is this part of this, I guess, not all historic, this preservation area, or is this, these two properties?
Well, I, yeah. I'm told that it's the entire parcel, okay? But the, I don't think it sits with parcel. I think it's the parcel that waving sits on parcel C is considered part of the store nature of it, not necessarily D E and F. But there's no, the, even there, the thought being from the state store preservation office is really. The facilities in and around Waving House. So Waving House, Powerhouse, Carriage Barn, things that even.
I thought, you know, a couple of years ago, when the, I believe it was Preservation Alliance, they did.
We, the house was designated.
I think the whole property was designated.
Right, but I. Right, I don't, I I think it was parcel C, which what the house sits on, not necessarily parcel D E or F.
No, I think it wasn't just parcel C.
I'd have to look. I don't, that I don't remember.
I guess we're only allowing, we're we're only approving. Ones on buildings on our soul. Which is the highest.
Parcel E.
Partially, correct, parcel.
Community is.
It's a parcel.
Par- parcel E, so. No one thinks that.
No.
It's part of the um, I don't know if it's a national district, whatever they call it.
In the National Historical Registry, but I, yeah, when uh when speaking to the the Preservation Alliance about. Work at waving, when we were talking about the parcel who was really. When we were talking about the parcel, who is really parcel of waving sits on and and their focus, the majority of it was. The areas strictly surrounding the house. Right, the conservancy really isn't satisfied with the houses, the 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 preservation alliance did the house and got the designation of the house. The conservancy's purview is really the grounds outside. So anything south of the land. Um, south of the main road. And while they're helping us, while they're helping us a little bit with some of the work. You know, say they they, you know, they gave us half the money to do the world garden, which is the world garden, but nothing for the house per se. Um, now strictly, uh, the maintenance thereof is the town's purview. So all the work they were doing now, the. The three million dollars of work they were doing now, or the four million to be capital first phase is all town funded. Um, and when I, when I spoke to Rose Rothberg about the designation of the house and the areas. She, while she said it was the parcel, they were mostly concerned about this area. The rest of it's been developed. Past that point where I don't think that they were, they were concerned with it. You know, the the high school is definitely not part of the store nature, right?
And the parcel of the north, what let me say that was?
I'm sorry, parcel, I'm, well, I meant parcel C, parcel.
So it would be the west.
The one above it is F, right, and F, if you, if you zoom back out again, F gets cut short by the water, by the water tower.
Yeah, go go to the uh second, second render. There you go.
So you're looking at, you know, from, from their standpoint, they're really, they were really focused on parcel C. Which is where the the house sat. And for the majority of it, they were looking at everything south of the road. Because everything north of the road has been changed. Um, you know, even the playing fields that used to be an airfield, an airstrip, so. For his point, so, planes, so. I'm, unless you have any other questions, I'm not perfect.
Um, so I guess I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience on the computer with any comments, questions, or anyone for or against? All that wants to speak? Jessica, do you have any um comments or questions?
I I mean, obviously, the circumstances are highly unusual, um, but I I thought, you know. These, these restrictions would essentially make it impossible for there to be. Proper school and facilities accompanying the school built. So I think in light of that, that's probably why there is a history of approvals amongst the uh, you know. P and Z level without it having reached us. And, uh, you know, I think it's reasonable for us to. Sort of affirm those approvals and to consider the variance here.
Anyone on the board have any comments before we move into that session? We'll alternate and I think you'll sit on this one. So quickly, I mean, you have to listen. Three minutes or hours or continue with weeks. But um, yeah, where to go?
No, I I, it is highly unusual. I I do see, you know, the hardship, just. How the whole history is situated. I I I think these, you know. I I'm I'm mainly concerned about the crowd access hour, which is. Development, you know, will help. I mean, I think that are very important. You know, so I think we could put our hat on that, as they say, and then um. Yeah, I I I think it all is. You know, given that how the land is divided up, I can see the hardship. So, you know, I would be in favor of the situation. For as long as it goes to the beans.
Yes, that would be the next step.
Yeah.
It's a requirement for the zone. And if they improve anything related to the school, you say after they get a special permit, they're putting it in something.
Right, we already had an eight twenty four.
So you didn't ask, but okay. Um, I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense, uh, what you proposed. Parking lot is there, it seems like we would incur a lot of extra cost and it would not make any sense for the buildings anywhere else. Um, the updating the restrooms, um, updating the, do you say? The ingress and egress, I mean, this often is quite logical, an additional classroom. Um, probably the side of the school has been expanded and the um student body has probably expanded with that. Uh, so there's probably a need for more classrooms. Um, and the uh, the ticket booth, I mean, if uh. The way you say that the uh, it helps open up the area, that makes a lot of sense. So I I think everything that's been proposed is quite logical and um, and I understand the hardships. And I would also agree to approve the uh request for a variance.
I think that everything that's been proposed here is not the worst. A great presentation. I mean, you explore their options and, I mean, it is what it is. Um, and I have no problem approving the variables.
I mean, for our parents, I think I I want to make clear that we're also approving the additional approved. Over coverage now, so we're covering the two hundred and eight thousand.
And I don't know if the board wants to consider just making it clear that you're approving the coverage for this specific project. So in the event, let's say plenty of zoning shoots it down, I just have seven thousand extra square feet of coverage for no reason.
It'd exactly be seven thousand feet they're asking for.
I can pull up the calculation. Could you, um, Jeff, could you stop sharing your screen?
Yeah, but I I don't want to move seven down and then it'd be like seven thousand fifty or something. No.
I I think I just generalized and then, no, no, so let me pull up.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm like.
I think so. Trying to do the planning now.
Okay, probably.
I mean, it's just we approved, approved around number.
Yeah, so it's on.
Seven thousand one hundred five.
Yeah, so two oh eight, seven fifty five, then subtract two oh one, six fifty.
Okay, so again, I want to make sure we're covering the existing uh brief over coverage. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we lose two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty five square feet of coverage. Aren't parcel E with the additional seven thousand, one hundred and five square feet to be. Used for the construction or development depicted on the application and company plans. As depicted on the application plans. As to the hardship, um, the concession stand hardship is that the, they need a concession stand, uh. Properly operate the athletic fields and and the high school, which is the use of property. And they need this concession stand, a considerable, appropriately sized. Um, field and the other field that are constructed on parcel over F to the north, that part after the west. Um, press box hardship, the needed, um, some certain instruction, technology is changing the broadcasting space for the. Um, high school broadcasters as well as the the media, they need um coaching space, homework, where I need to be able to store the high school. AV equipment, higher trip of the ticket booth, safety, they need to flow people in and out. They also need to move it so that um service equipment can access the fields. The bathrooms are undersized for the number of people. So with a safety issue, hygiene issue, they need adequately sized bathrooms. And they also need bathrooms on the eastward side of the field for the visitor team. There's nowhere apparently serve, store the equipment used on the field, so to make reasonable use of the field, they need a place to store. The equipment, there's no other reasonable location on property, locate the buildings because of the location of the apartment and vehicle access to it. They can move the buildings easterly because it brings them into clouds, which would impede. Um, E, access and egress and other safety issues from the property. Anyone second the motion or have changes to it? It's a long motion, I try because.
Yeah, no, I think you, Rich, I would too. I second the motion, I think you laid it out nicely.
Jessica, I'll, I'll make you, because you're on the screen, anything to say before we vote? Okay, um, Jessica, do you want to, so I made a motion?
Yeah, sorry, seconded it. I'm guessing you want to start voting.
Sorry, Carden in favor.
Christie.
Robert in favor. Dylan in favor.
Ashley in favor.
Carolyn too in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
No, I don't want to. I'm usually here, so I I usually think, well, I don't care, I'll zoom. Yeah, I just have a question. As far as uh traffic lights in town, is that? That doesn't come under, what comes under the police thing?
Uh, are you specifically in what nature? So.
For example, well, I don't want to get people stuck.
It's okay, everyone has a question.
Coming down um, uh, where the train station is, uh, go make it a right on one oh six. If we want a right turn only lane.
Okay, so you're talking town to chill.
Yeah.
Right, coming down. So, right, we we uh, so those fall underneath my nature. So that's, because that's a DOT operated light, right? So we we share the responsibility between myself and the police commission, which is the legal traffic authority. We've approached the DOT on multiple occasions to try to get a right hand turning lane in there. Um, and right now, there's a little bit of restriction as far as um, the curb line is a little. Right, it's, it'll tend to bump over the top of it. Now, we have a grant right now and we're, we're under design for new sidewalks. From townage from one oh six up the hill towards train station. That'll take into account that situation. We'll try to then, at that point in time, widen it to be able to get, we only need a couple of feet. We don't need a lot. People go over it anyways, but they're reluctant to grant it to us now because you actually have to drive over the curb to get it. So we're in a process.
Where, when you come down Palm and Choke from the train station to one oh six and you make a right hand turn going toward the Mary. It backs up because if one person has to make a left hand turn and a hundred cars of making a right turn. They all have to wait.
Yeah, depending on where they queue up, but yeah, if they don't queue up closer to the double yellow, they preclude you from making the turn. So you can make it. That's a pump station for aquarium water. The um, it's actually carries water from the Belton Hills Station. Um, in Wilton, all the way through to Greenwich and Wilton as well. It's actually underground, because you just don't know that it's there. So their entire pump station is underground. Now, given confined space problems, they've asked it to be raised, so it's above ground now. Um, so it's almost completed. It's got another couple of months left before it's done. But the piping, oh, they're utilizing the existing piping, the rest of it, but they're bringing everything, all the, everything from the chambers down below up top. So it's easier to make, the easier to manage in in the confined space requirements are are very, very difficult from an ocean standpoint. Yeah, so that's, yeah, so we have, we have several that we're looking at. No, it's, he bothers me about it all the time. So every time you ask me, ask me. It's come, well, it's bringing people from, the thought is that, well, one, we get to, it's the entire stretch of sidewalk. And then we're going to extend it from the train station downward because it's part of a larger project to try to tie it dairy in. And there's a lot of people that walk on one oh six from dairy end to that. So the thought is to get at least from a grant's perspective down to there, and then we can then get another grant and share with dairy end. We only have to go to Barringer and then dairy end will take it the rest of the way. We've been working on this type of aspect for about ten years. We increased the lighting, we had them narrow the uh, the pavement planes. To try to add a little bit more for pedestrians on as far as inside the white thing, past the edge line. And then uh, and then we put in additional trap uh overhead lights, every other pole to then try to illuminate it for people coming up. Who've done all that work and now it's just a hard skate itself.
Okay, let's.
Yeah.
When you came in, there was a stack of paper, right there, I did, there was a shed specifically on your pile.
Yeah, I read it, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I guess the next item on our agenda is approved in this. Does anyone have any comments?
I read them and I don't have any.
No comments.
Someone want to make a motion to?
I moved to prove the minutes, Jessica Card.
I second.
First, you are here.
She wasn't here.
You weren't at the last.
Just, I was there on Zoom for most of the time, but I couldn't participate except when he's on there yet. I was there, but I wasn't able to participate, but I was there.
The only items mattered before the board, and I guess not before the board, would like to bring them, because I've brought this up for years now. I wish we had like a hat or something or a vest that said donor board appeals to feel uncomfortable, like walking around people's property. Without anything at all to identify like who I, who I am. Like we used to have when I first started, you had like at least a little card, maybe like a copy. At least have a little card to show someone. But I do feel like we should have something like a hat, a hat, a. No, no, just something so it not, why is it random person walking around our property?
Yeah, so I can um, so baseball hats would be the cheapest, uh, easiest probably to just get at the town logo, say for the appeals. Um, I will, like tomorrow, I can talk to our admin.
One, I would, the other thing, like maybe a yellow vest, maybe people notice. Like something that's like not a normal thing, so when you walk around somebody's property, they don't think like someone's.
Okay, I will um, I will talk with the admin about it. We are at the end of budget season, so we're a little.
Right.
A little tight right now, so July one may be a better time to discuss.
Now, when they apply, I mean, is there a communication that could let the homeowner know?
Yeah, I honestly.
Some people walking around your property.
I honestly didn't know if you all were actually going, because the properties are not. Yeah.
Person being concerned.
Yeah, we generally go.
I always do, but I never run the door too and let, tell people who I am.
So I mean, we can add that, we can add that, because I can honestly don't warn people that you guys are going, because I wouldn't worry. There definitely hasn't been anything in the packet for the last year and a half, but I've seen, so I can, I can add that in tomorrow and.
Yeah, it should be something like that, if the session or the weekend before this, but I feel there's been a lot for it. Even that's if someone doesn't look on their camera later on, it's like who was first. Walking around in a property with one, oh, yeah, like, that's why it happened, like, you know, it's still not like something.
Yeah, I'll look into it. Um, I I definitely understand and I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it helps with Google Maps these days. I mean, you know, you can see everything, but still.
We can't be selfless.
I I agree, I agree, I go in person, I I, John taught me to go in person. You weren't allowed to talk, but we would.
Yeah, so if you guys are going, technically not supposed to go with anyone else, because if you do, then it's a quorum and then. Go alone.
I guess there'd be, I'll turn maybe something like in the wetlands where they all go visit together, but I think that might be hard with people's schedules. And then they open, you ain't noticed it and everything.
I was just thinking, there are a lot of applications that we get, especially like this meeting in particular, where like, they weren't. These massive, I've done a city of was a large project, but the other one that. These massive, I don't need to say the idea of was large project, but the other ones, they were smaller. And I just don't know if they warranted a whole site, the the whole thing, whereas wetlands, they always go, because those projects tend to be more intensive.
I think generally this all, huh?
I just need to do a whole site.
I don't remember, you've never done that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I I think that it's probably easier, harder to go on their own.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of.
I've never forgotten, I had a wetland exam, and I remember showing up in August. It was so hot, it was, I never forget that. Oh.
Uh, let me make a motion to.
I'm sorry.
All favor.